Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Work Session this evening, August 18th, 2025. Work sessions are less formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information regarding town issues from staff members and/or consultants. Citizens are encouraged to attend and observe work sessions. However, they do not include public hearings. Council does not take an action vote on items during a work session other than to vote to place the item on the next council meeting for an official vote. Council work sessions are streamed live on the town's YouTube channel and minutes are taken. I'm Hazel Livingston, your mayor, and to my left is Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Law.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Ginny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
Tonight, our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Carnes will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we pause for a moment to ask for your favor on the things we do, ask for your wisdom in the decisions we make, ask for your unity in the town that we lead, and ask for your pleasure upon the things that we put our hands to. And so you've gifted us much here in this great little town. We're in a place of peace and prosperity, safety, goodness, camaraderie, all good things. And as your word says, all good things come from you, so we're deeply grateful. Pray that you would help us to expound on that and hand it off to the next generation. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Councilmember Smith will lead us in the pledge if you all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the meeting to order. Council met in executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed the following matters: discussion regarding West Columbia water litigation, discussion of personnel, employee handbook, and compensation plan, discussion regarding the solid waste and recycling contract, discussion of a contract related to an economic development project, discussion of proposed easement on town property, and a discussion regarding agenda items. No vote was taken in executive session. Do I hear a motion to ratify that report?
So moved.
Mayor Protem makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We do have an item that we need to come out of executive session and vote on, and I will let Council, I mean Mayor Protem Williams, make that motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This time, I want to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to execute a collateral assignment of lease for parking spaces related to the private financing of a downtown economic development project.
Councilmember, I mean Mayor Protem Williams makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Michael, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Are there any deletions of items from tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we're moving to a presentation. We have Mr. Chip Morrison with Emeritage Homes, who is here this evening to provide information regarding a proposed annexation.
Appreciate y'all having us this evening. Just to run through a brief overview of our project, I'll be discussing tonight. This is a project located off of Bar Road, roughly 191 acres. We plan for 308 single-family homes with lot sizes ranging anywhere from 7,209,000 square feet. Our total site density for this project sits right at about 1.61 units to the acre. Currently, ordinance allows for five units to the acre, and the open space required is roughly 32.5, whereas we're providing 72. Taking out the dams, we're still at 40 acres, provided an open space with a density still under two units to the acre. Our site amenities will be a large clubhouse, community pool, walking trails, fire pits, seating areas surrounding the existing ponds, access to the existing ponds, and the walking trails planned throughout. We do have intent to tie in with the future public trail system if so approach for that. Our dam crossings, I know that's been a point of discussion, so I just briefly want to point out, current extensive soil testing and dam studies are underway right now and being reviewed by our third party. Those dam crossings will be to SCDS standards and will be privately owned, those crossings, those roadways, by the HOA. They will be not publicly dedicated. In addition to that, our stormwater management, that's another point of discussion that we've had in the past. We will not be discharging into any of these, any of the existing ponds. We will have our own stormwater detention on-site. Outside of that, myself, the rest of my team, our engineer, and our real estate professionals are also here to answer any questions that you all may have.
I am going to allow, is that all?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we were under the impression you might, we're going to show us some of the homes.
That's all included in the package. I think we wanted to keep things limited to any comments you guys have and answer any questions that you have particularly related to annexation. We're here to fill any questions so far as elevation. We want to talk about that. Again, that information is provided in the packets that we gave to the local residents during our community meeting last week.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here. I appreciate you coming down and doing the citizen meetings. I have a very specific question for you. I've reviewed the site plan, and one thing piqued my interest that I wanted to ask you specifically about, and forgive me, I don't know the name, but I'm sure you'll, you'll know exactly what road I'm referring to. Last summer, I met with 45, 50 residents and off the Yell Road subdivision, the back of your subdivision, and they were specifically concerned about connectivity to this neighborhood. So first, I just want to ask you, do y'all have any plans for connectivity?
We do not. We do not. So currently shown on the site plan right now is just to be in accordance with town ordinance. We have no plans now or in the future to connect this project into the existing community next door.
Okay. And that's why that is?
Correct.
Included on there?
Honestly, just following the rules for the site layout. That's, that's all that's reflected there.
So you would have no issue if that was removed?
I would have no issue, no.
And how would you, would you expand lot sizes, or what would you?
Shift lots up and down, more than likely, or maybe put a pocket park for, you know, dog station, benches. If there was enough room, probably a totlot.
Okay. So just to be clear one more time, there's no plans at all for connectivity?
No, not for Meritage Homes.
Okay, great. I'll yield back for a moment.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Good question. What's, what was your plans for buffers around the neighborhood? Anything or landscaping? Was it just through the landscaping ordinance that we have?
Correct.
Or were there any plans for 50-foot, 100-foot buffer from other neighbors outside of the neighborhood, or was there any potential plan for that?
There wasn't any potential, well, let me say, there was no initial plan for that after talking with some neighbors at the community meeting. That's something that we're definitely taking a look at.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You said this, but you were, you were talking fast. So open space is always a big issue. Your notes here, open space provided, or open space required is 17%, which is 32 acres. You guys are providing 72 acres. And did you, when you first mentioned that, did you call out how much of that is existing ponds?
I didn't. I did allude to it. So if you were to take out the existing ponds where it sits right now, we still are providing about 40 acres worth of open space, so above.
So 40 acres of green space and the rest is in ponds?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was given a packet that said a detailed traffic study being completed.
Correct.
Who did the traffic study?
Impact.
Whose impact?
It's a third-party traffic engineer that we use, or a third-party traffic consultant that we use quite often.
Okay, so you have history with them?
Up in the upstate, we do.
All right. And they came down and did a traffic study here?
I believe they also operate in the Columbia market as well, correct me if I'm wrong, Kayla. Yep. So they're reputable in, in the Midlands as well. And just to expand on that a little bit further, just for the sake of working with the town, we've actually requested that we submit that traffic study to the town to have their third-party engineer review it themselves.
And you guys are open to doing any necessary traffic improvements that might be called out in that study?
Absolutely.
I have another question. How many dams are there going to be that are monitored by what was formerly DHEC, and you've called them out now properly as the Department of, what is it, DHS?
DHEC, yeah.
Yeah. How many dams are there?
I don't know off the top of my head. Kayla, you might be able to speak to that.
Good evening. Kayla Joyner with Seaman Whiteside Engineering. Thank you guys for having us back out. So currently, there are two dams on-site that'll be crossed as a part of this plan. So those are being studied, and they have geotech engineers that are working to do soil borings and just make sure that those are going to be stabilized properly. And just to reiterate, those will have to be inspected and engineered up to full SCDES. Department of Environmental Services, they keep changing it on us. Yeah, those will, those will be fully up to their current code.
So here's the follow-on question. We have one neighborhood in the town limits that currently has several ponds that were not properly managed, and the HOA was not properly tasked with collecting dues, and it becomes a big problem. So I'm curious, if you're going to have two large dams, what mechanisms or oversight in place do you guys envision such that there's not a dam problem, and then there's not collected funds necessary to make that correction, such that the hat is being asked to be passed around for 300 residents, and it ultimately can't work? Because the way this thing's drawn up, there's not a lot of connectivity, which means there could be issues.
No, that's a very valid point. The first piece of that that I'll speak to is the stormwater management plan that is going to be in place. So the current water flow to those existing ponds is going to be reduced, and that is part of the DES standards for a stormwater management plan. When we submit that, we will be adding additional ponds outside of the existing to detain any new flows created. So that's going to ensure that you don't have any additional runoff, and in fact, your runoff to those ponds is going to be reduced. So that's point A. That'll help with just, you know, any future water, if there's a big storm. If it backs up currently, I don't know if it does out there, but it won't in the future. And then with those DES standards, there are maintenance cycles that those dams will have to go through, so that'll be fully on Meritage's end, and maybe you can speak to how y'all structured that in the past, but to ensure that those maintenance check marks are being hit to keep those up to code.
I think maybe more specifically, because I realize once you turn it over, it's not really your problem, or not yours, when you're beginning with, developer's problem. What mechanisms in place are you guys going to utilize, and what factors of safety are you going to use to ensure that, that you guys put enough in the coffers such that when you hand this thing off, if there is an issue with one of those dams, you don't, you know, you don't get stuck with a bunch of neighbors who can't fix a problem that's very expensive?
Right.
And again, I'm saying that because there's existing precedent there in the town limits now, having underfunded accounts for potential dam pond issues.
Right. So I think when it comes to funding the HOA, we always take a detailed look at, hey, what's going to make the HOA solvent, not just now, but in the future. I can't exactly speak to the particulars and how we're going to mitigate that. However, I know that it would cost us a lot more money in the long run by shorting out on that rather than not funding it sufficiently in the first place from a warranty perspective.
What is your warranty?
In terms of dam maintenance? I believe this would be our first dam project.
Are you familiar with the statute to repose on it?
I'm not, no.
Okay. I'd be interested to hear what you guys plan is in detail for that.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Chip, I appreciate the fact that y'all came to town hall last week and did a town hall meeting with residents of the area. We spoke on the phone just prior to that regarding the notice and discussed that, and you all have agreed to do an additional meeting. And I appreciate y'all doing that as well, just because of how brief notice the residents received on that. So again, thank you for being willing to do a second follow-up meeting. Could you provide details on when that meeting will be? Has it been scheduled? Have residents been noticed? How you noticed those individuals? Just can you provide us some insight into that?
Absolutely. There's, there's a couple folks that I've reached out to from the community meeting, just to give them a heads up. We are currently discussing and waiting for final approval from the church themselves. One of our team members here actually talked with the church today to reserve that. Verbally, it sounded like we were all on track to do it on the 28th, and I believe it was 6 o'clock to 7:30. Once we get that final confirmation, which we think will be tomorrow morning, we'll go ahead and get those letters out. I'll email a couple of those residents just to make sure that they get the word out.
Okay. So today's the 18th. If you get the letters out on the 19th, likely we could find ourselves in a situation where they have four or five days' notice again. I would just ask that we really make an effort to ensure that they have ample amount of time to schedule. This is back-to-school time. This is football starting, you know, all the things are starting. If you guys could just please make sure that they have, you know, ample amount of time to, to know about the meeting so that they can schedule accordingly. And again, I emphasize, I appreciate that y'all are doing that, taking the time to get out in the community and meet with neighbors and, and hear their concerns about the development. That, that does mean something to this community.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think I've heard this anecdotally, but we got source information here. It looks like you guys, you have a timeline. Vertical construction begins April 2028. I currently live in Bar Lake, and I think it's about 400 homes, and, and that was, that one also has a lake, had a dam failure. But that was in the Thousand Year Flood, right? That's not going to happen again. But I think Bar Lake is going to build out probably in the next couple of years. So it was a 10, 12-year project. What is the timeline for your completion? I know these things are variable, but you would, you would say you start in April 2028, houses coming out of the ground. When would you forecast finishing?
About 2033, so our last 17 sales, so a very short period of 2033. You know, granted, we don't live in a perfect world, and
Right.
And the market does shift from time to time. But 2033 is, is the projected day that we're going to be taking our last few sales, and it's only about 17 that we're projecting right now.
Perfect.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. I've got a couple things written down here. You said that the traffic study be complete and submitted to the town. Do you have an idea, since we're on record here, can you give us an idea of when we can tell citizens that traffic study will be out for the, for the town to look at it?
Yes, it sits right now. I think I'm, I'm looking over to, to staff of when that's going to be complete.
I know that Randy has it and has sent it off to the third party, the town's third party, and is waiting back on that. Randy's out of town this week, so I know it will not be until next week until I have an updated timeline.
Okay. And then are there any traffic improvements that you're going to be doing outside of this entrance and exit of this particular subdivision?
Outside of what's listed in the packet?
No, just for the folks that don't have the packet.
Correct.
Can you tell the general public what traffic improvements y'all are going to be doing outside the two entrances and exits of the subdivision?
Yeah, so I can, I can go through kind of the list here, and it might be a little redundant, so I apologize. But again, for people at home that don't have the packet. So we're looking at doing a right-turn lane, excuse me, into the community off of Highway 1. I'm sorry, I'm just pulling up my, my notes here, excuse me. So we'll be doing a right-turn lane from Highway 1 on to Bar Road, a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane into access A, which will be off of Bar Road, and then a left-turn lane from Bar Road onto Wildlife.
Okay. And you said you're going to do a, a meeting at the church. Can you tell the public what church? Because there's going to be folks going to watch this on YouTube, so we need to, maybe we can put that out there for them to know exactly where you're talking about.
Absolutely. It's the Presbyterian Church right there at the corner of Bar Road and just north of where a site access A will be.
I think you've covered all the rest of my questions with the other council members, so I'm good, Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Sorry. Can I just answer Todd's question?
Sure.
Quick about the HOA and the dams? So I apologize. I'm Sean Caskin with Meritage as well. Anytime we turn over a community, we do a reserve study of our HOA to ensure that we have adequate funds in order to turn it over to the public prior to us exiting the community.
Are you guys going to make that available for us to see regarding that?
The HOA, kind of the funds. We, we outlay kind of what we anticipate for the community. It's variable, but yes, we can outlay kind of what we have reserved for an HOA, absolutely.
Do you understand why I raise that concern?
No, absolutely. It seems like a very valid concern, and it sounds like
It's pretty obvious that you guys could underfund it, and then 10 or 15 years from now, it's not your problem. You're gone, and then you got 300 homeowners.
Hardly agree, yes.
Yeah. And again, we're, we're not just smart, we're doing that from experience in another neighborhood, so.
Absolutely. Would hate for that to happen again. But yes, we do a reserve study prior to turn it over to ensure that we have the adequate funds and that so that homeowners are not put out.
Mayor, another question. You might know the answer we asked, or Todd asked earlier about warranty of those dams. Is that just, you're just talking about the reserves of HOA funds, no warranty for a certain amount of time on those dams?
I, I think, could we kind of pencil that question and could we get back with the answer on that? That's okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask about the emergency exit or entrance access to the community. Could you talk to us about that? What improvements will be made there? Is it going to be gated, coded? Will it be wide enough for fire trucks to come in and out? Could you just talk to us about that, please?
Yeah, I think a great person to answer that would probably be Kayla.
Yes, sorry. I thought you bailed out on it.
So I'm assuming we're talking about the back drive that currently goes down to the Yell?
I think it's Wingtail, Wingdinga.
Yep, the Hidden Tavern, as I've heard coined, yes. So the intent is for that to serve as emergency access. It will not be gated, it will not be coded, it'll remain open. So not just emergency, but that could be a feasible access route into the development. It won't be one of the two primaries, but that road will, will make sure that it's fully up to standard to allow fire truck emergency access, but per an earlier conversation with town staff, that cannot be gated and restricted access. It has to be left open.
So to clarify, the road improvements would be, be brought to a regular road standard as required?
Whatever the fire marshal deems is sufficient for them to get a truck in there, yes. That's correct.
Okay.
And then while I'm up, if I can, speak to your question earlier regarding the traffic study. So we do have that under review with the third-party reviewer with the town that's also being reviewed by DOT currently. So we, we hope within the next month to have comments back from both, and that'll give us a study that we're ready to pass on and have stamped and approved for review.
Were you guys willing to share those comments that the district engineer would give us or give you?
I would certainly be open to it. That'd probably be more your preference. Yeah, we, we often share those.
I say it with sincerity when I say that traffic is by far the number-one concern of mine and many folks up here, and that's always the concern, and we just have so very little resources to do with, so that when a big impact comes in like this, we need all the help we can get.
And really, the, the primary goal of that third-party review with the town was that transparency piece, was to make sure that the town had the full ability to deliver comments, share comments. So we'll make sure that those are shared with your team as well.
Thank you.
So again, we do appreciate y'all having the meetings. Are y'all going to speak with the people that left y'all cards and had comments and address some of those with the neighbors?
We will be. And I think the first step in doing that is this follow-up community meeting. I'm sure many of them will still be there, same letter, same, same folks are going to be invited to that community meeting, so we'll address some of the things that we talked about, some of the things that we're looking at, and also individually have discussions with them. But on an individual basis, yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a clarification question?
Yes.
Or really, not a question, I just want to make a statement. Earlier, I asked you about the meeting and making sure that residents had ample time. I just want to clarify, can you please make sure that moving forward, when you notice that meeting, that residents don't find themselves in the same position of only having two or three, four days to, to make schedule? When you send that out, make sure that there's, it's planned, and there's enough lead time for the mail to make it to people. I know I personally experienced where mail sometimes takes a week to make it to my house for whatever reason. I would just ask that as you're planning that, you make sure that there is ample time for that delivery.
Absolutely.
I think, too, you got a lot of email addresses and stuff, and this community seems to pull together, especially a couple of the neighborhoods. So I think that you could let those people know, too, just in case letters got lost, and that would be taking a big step forward of, of making sure everybody that you've got email addresses to would go ahead and
Absolutely.
Get notification.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Chip, you should, we don't, we have that from the church yet, so we can maybe, we got that out there, but they have it in there.
Great.
I'm with you, I'm going to send the letters, and I'm expecting that to be advanced, the mail is slow. I'll write that with you, or we'll send it tomorrow, or the same.
So expect a call from me tomorrow, one way or another.
Yeah, and, and I think I, I can't speak for everyone up here, but I, I think I can take, if you provide it to us, we're happy to share it, you know, with our networks. I'm happy to share it on our social, like, we'll help you make sure that that makes it out there. But I would just say for the mail service, again, I personally experienced, I send something in town, and it somehow takes seven days to get just across town, so take that into consideration.
We know, we know now.
You've got a lot of the emails, too, from, from the meeting, so use those, use the phone numbers, whatever you got to do, and people will help you get it spread if you ask them to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to business items tonight. First business item is from Municipal Clerk Laura Henson regarding boards and commissions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This comes up yearly, but it's for reappointments to boards and commissions. So we have the term. Some of the following members are listed in the packets, but Board of Zoning Appeals, Ronald Fisher. For Traffic Committee, the Chair, Susan Ruin. Vice Chair, Rosemary Wilson. Committee Member, Michael Pitts. And then for Planning Commission, the Chair, Frank Berry. And Commission Member, Joseph Robertson. They have all been reached out to, and they are interested in serving in their current capacity. In accordance with our town procedures, reappointment would require council approval. So where we're looking to have this placed on the September 2nd agenda.
Do I hear a motion to put this on the agenda?
So moved.
Councilmember Carnes makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Law, second. All those in favor, or any discussion? Sorry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our next item is Vision Plan Advisory Committee. Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, October of 2023, you all, a prior body, voted to form a Vision Plan Advisory Committee. Subsequent to that vote, no further action was taken to define the roles, responsibilities, or even membership of the committee, and thus, no further action was taken. At the same time, in that October 2023 meeting and the months leading up to it, council had discussed dissolving a separate, unrelated, but similarly named advisory committee. And at the time, all of those members were invited to apply to participate in the Vision at the time, all of those members were invited to apply to participate in the Vision Plan Advisory Committee, and those names are listed there. Each of those folks did apply, but again, there was no further action taken. And I know that I shared this with council previously, and no discussion, or pardon me, no decision was made on whether to automatically incorporate these folks or have them reapply. I'm just providing this to you for background information. What I'm here tonight to do is get your direction with establishing this Vision Plan Advisory Committee. So the first decision that you all would need to make is, will you directly appoint these individuals, or will you have there be an open application process, like we've done with other new committees? And the second is to review a draft Vision Plan Advisory Committee ordinance that sets forth the membership, the term, and their responsibilities. So I give you the option of whether you'd want to direct a point or allow open application, because the original advisory committee that was ad hoc and was established about 15 years ago, was a group of individuals appointed by a combination of folks to include the mayor at the time, administrator, economic developer, and a few other folks, as opposed to an open application process.
And how many people were you thinking?
I think I recommended 10. I took a look at what was provided online for our Vision Plan Advisory Committee, and I actually, he may notice, Councilwoman Smith, I used some of his recommendations from October of 2023, when he initially proposed this particular committee. It wasn't written necessarily to this extent, but I picked a few things to start with, and I figured council could strike, accept whatever you'd like to do.
Mayor, I have a question. So these advisory, these were already people on the committee, on a committee?
The individuals who are listed were previously on a separate unrelated but similarly-named advisory committee. That committee was dissolved by a vote of council in 2023. I don't believe the October, pardon me, I take it back, it was discussed by council to be dissolved, a formal action was never taken. Those folks have not met, at least since mid-2023, if not previously. Those individuals were asked to apply for consideration on this new committee. No further action was taken on this new committee, so I'm providing their names as information for you all, in case you would want to consider them for an appointment or to encourage them to reapply, just historical information.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would just say, I mean, I think open applications would be good. Let citizens apply, and then let's see who applies and go through the applications. I think it's always great to see who wants to serve their community and give citizens an opportunity to do so.
I was leaning towards the same way. Open application. And I mean, I would, I do think you should call these people since we told them and ask them to at least apply again if they're interested.
If they're interested, we can, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I think they deserve a personal call if we told them, but I think I like the idea of...
Okay.
And so we maybe need to get that out on our website and on our social media page, that we're taking applications for this, that will be given direction for the town for the next 10 years, five years.
Yes, absolutely. So the vision plan, as we renew it, will look ahead minimum 10 years. It is recommended for this to not be an ad hoc committee, but to be an active committee. We can absolutely do all of that, but like a little bit more direction on what you would like the body to look like, membership-wise, their responsibilities. It's difficult to put out a call for applications if you're not quite sure what you'll be doing.
Well, I think, I think your duties and responsibilities is good that you have down here and their authority. Yes.
Wouldn't it just be okay to put out an open application and see what applications come in, and then, you know, we, I guess, are you looking for us to say we want, you know, one small business owner, one parent, one, you know, I don't even know how to break that down, but are you looking for guidance like that, or what would help staff?
So we need, we need to establish the definition for this committee, the membership, the number of individuals, so I've provided a sample of what you could use, if you're happy with it, that's fine. We'll incorporate it via ordinance, the way we've done our other committees, to include most recently, the Small Business Advisory Committee. So if you all are okay with the draft as written, we'll certainly proceed. It'll be in ordinance, so there will be two readings. The first reading could be as soon as September 2nd, with the second reading on October 6th, I believe, is the October meeting. But we can start simple like this and modify it in the future. It does not, I intentionally did not include, we need so many residents versus so many business owners, because I thought that should be the will of council, and thinking into the future, if we should ever have members cycle off, it can sometimes be difficult to find specific people just to meet a certain criteria, and I wanted to give you all the flexibility in the future to make that decision.
Okay. I'm the one that's been here since the beginning of the vision plan thing, and I'm trying to think back. I almost feel like I remember, besides the citizens that served, there was a faith-based person, a, somebody from the schools, a business person, and I would have to ask one, I mean, the previous mayor that started the vision plan, some more, but I think there were some, besides just the citizens, there were specific groups that was targeted. There was education, business, faith-based, maybe nonprofits, that had an appointee also besides, besides the citizens that were on it.
So what's recommended is a combination of residents as well as business owners in town.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Whichever one wants to go first. He yielded to you.
Rachel, who's going to be the employee that's going to be liaison to this advisory council?
That's a great question. So previously, it was the community catalyst, who was our economic developer. In discussions from October of 2023, our economic developer was identified, it was Jack Stewart, and he's still in that role. Council can consider him, or council would also appoint that individual, so it could be another individual of council's choice.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got a couple of weeks before we vote on this, so can we, could you possibly pull the records from a previous vision plan committee and see, see how, what the logistics were, and email it out to us? Like if there was a requirement for the school board, if there's a, you know, have you looked?
I have, I've done that research, there is no documentation. I had to call Boudreaux Group, who was the original facilitator, and she was able to verbally provide me everything that I've provided you tonight.
Mayor, you better call past mayor.
I'm just going from memory, but there was a lot of people involved that wasn't definitely, necessarily appointed and that kind of stuff, that were active in coming to the meeting.
I would just take into consideration, if that was an ad hoc committee that was chosen just to design and vet the plan, and that was their only responsibility, I could understand why it might look a little bit more diverse. You all can appoint this however you'd like, I would just caution you from being very specific. I know there are other committees that when you have specific roles, we absolutely need a, you know, a person who runs a construction company. Well, if that person rolls off in the future, it might be difficult to find someone to fill that specific niche. So again, you can certainly define it however you'd like, but just remember that your specificity can limit you in the future.
I don't think it was so much to approve everything, I think it was some, they were there more or less to make sure that the faith-based community, they were communicating to them of, hey, a meeting's going on and it's for you, be here, or the chamber, somebody from there was on it that was, got it back to all the small businesses in the area, it's people to make sure that the ones in their groups were being told what was going on and come, come talk, come, this meeting's about yours.
I would anticipate, if we collected applications, it would run very similarly to how the Small Business Advisory Committee was handled. When the applications came in, council reviewed the applicants and made decisions on who they would appoint based on their backgrounds.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would say, that's worked really well for the Small Business Advisory Committee, and I agree with that point. I do think that there could be a few key, I guess, demographics, faith-based, I think would be great to make sure that we have someone that is representing that community. And I think it would be inherent upon us to identify what those are. Faith-based makes sense to me, you know, maybe someone from this, from the schools or a parent, you know, one has to be a parent, but I don't think we want to start trying to define, you know, 20 different, you know, demographics to represent, because then the issue we've run into on Small Business Committee is, finding a time that 20 people can meet is very difficult, and you start dealing with people that can't show up, or there's not enough time for everyone to speak, so I would also caution, we've learned that on our, on our committee for sure. So I don't know if you have a recommendation on, should we define a few of those demographics, or would you just, would you not do that? I mean, what would you think, Rachel?
I think the faith-based community is large enough that you could define that. I don't know how much more I would define it. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be an employee of a faith-based institution, it could be a leader, a volunteer, I would, I would keep that very open, but I understand that for our community, for sure. I'd also like to point out that the recommended, as written, is 10 individuals, if you want that to be more, it certainly can be, just again, cautioning that scheduling that many folks all at one time can just be difficult.
What if they're not, someone has to be there, let's just use Anjel since you're out there, I'm gonna pick on you. What if she was an appointee for the business community to be on there? You had 10 applicants that we appointed from up here, and Anjel, we appointed her as the business community liaison to take back to them. And same thing maybe for the faith-based, or for the school system, I mean, if a school board member or if a teacher wanted to do it, or a principal wanted to do it, and they could take it back.
Like an ex officium member.
Yes, yes.
We can certainly do that. She serves that role for small business, she technically would meet all the other criteria if she wanted to apply anyway, but I understand what you're saying.
You could, you could also argue that just keep it at 10, and then that committee could identify key demographics that they want to, and then bring in five people to interview from that community, and then that limits it to 10, or I almost would argue that with small business, I might would say go to eight, just because it is, it is hard to schedule people, and you just really start having a lot of absences at each meeting.
I think that's a fair point, and by accepting, by applying and accepting an appointment to this particular committee, regardless of what your background is, if you are just a resident or just a business owner, it's going to be incumbent upon you to help spread the word and get people to attend meetings or come to an input session, even if it's not in your normal wheelhouse, so that's the beauty of the role.
Yeah.
Well, let's stay with 10 and see if you can put us together some stuff, and what an application would look like, that you think it should look like, and let's put it on the agenda.
I anticipated that we would use our standard application.
Okay, that's fine.
And so if there's no other input, what's provided tonight is what can be presented as the ordinance on September 2nd.
Sounds great.
I think it's fine as written.
I think it's great, too.
I'll make a motion to put it on the agenda.
Mayor Perrettian makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyle, second set. Is there any other discussion?
Thank y'all for doing this.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. Item number three is a proposed greeting from Lexington Art Mural, Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton.
Oh, boy.
Yes, Mayor, Keep the Midlands Beautiful is a local nonprofit that has a number of initiatives, but in particular, one of the things they focus on is community beautification, and what you can see here is an example of a mural that they've installed in the town of Swansea. So Keep the Midlands Beautiful has funding to provide greetings from murals all across the municipalities in their area. There is a smallish fee associated with it, and our friends at the Lexington Chamber is willing to cover the fee if our town is interested in having a Greetings from Lexington mural. So Michael is sharing some other examples, and I have printed, a few printed copies if council wants to see, take home and look after. Greetings from murals are popular all over the country, they're destinations, they're Instagrammable spots, just a way to celebrate your community. Typically, these murals are placed in highly-trafficked area by folks, whether you're driving or on foot. So what's being proposed tonight is, if we are so interested to have one of these murals in our town, the cost of installation, like I said, would be covered by the Chamber, and Keep the Midlands Beautiful would work with us to design it, they'll handle all the details, and a clear graffiti-proof cover will be applied on top of the mural. Ms. Trouty, who is the executive director of Keep the Midlands Beautiful, is here tonight. She volunteered to be here in case you all have any questions. A few things in your packet that was posted is the example of the Swansea mural, which you can see here. There's also the application for the mural. The way that the mural is designed is that each of them have a few South Carolina-specific pieces, so for example, a palmetto tree, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I can't remember the rest of them, maybe a hunting dog, anyhow. So we would choose at minimum three of those, so that there is continuity in these murals, and then we then would identify anything specific to the town of Lexington that we would also like to have incorporated. It may be some of the other of the standards to choose from, but it's a way to make our mural a little bit more special to us. The application is provided in the packet for you. Also provided in the packet that you all received were some suggestions of locations for the mural. So I had Jack and Brandon go around and identify locations on town-owned property where this mural could be placed. It is not ideal for us to partner with a private property owner to place it on their facility, simply because we will own this and keep this clean in perpetuity, and we wouldn't want to run into any difficulties in the future if there was any changeover in property. And so the few recommendations that we have, one is in Virginia Hilton Park, on the back of Town Hall itself, the back stairs. The second is the entryway into the Ice House Storage Area off of South Church Street. We do have some natural growth along that wall, somewhat intentional, just to help soften that wall in particular, so there's not so much concrete, but it really would, if cleaned up, be a fantastic location for the mural, because it is a very visible area and easily accessible by folks who would want to take a photo. There's a few other angles also in VHP that would be on either our pergola wall or the wall that surrounds some of the utility equipment that we have in VHP. Those locations would be easy for folks to get to, they'd be able to get there without having, you know, fear of trespassing on anything, they're Instagrammable and safe places for folks to want to take a picture in front of it. So what I'm seeking tonight is, from council, is there interest in this, and what particular location, and we can take it from there?
Go ahead. You go ahead.
I think there's interest. I would be in favor of either the Ice House Storage Wall or something different. I think the rest of these are so hidden that it's almost like you're not really interested in showing it off, so I'd be interested, I'd be interested in looking for other walls, because those photos look good. If you have something like that you want to show off, so Ice House Storage interests me, but if there was something more open, I would be in favor of that.
Of course, you know, I'm very interested, because that's the one thing we're missing in Lexington, is some art and some different things like that. I am not okay with the VHP pergola wall, because that was designed for a children's mural to go there. When the park committee put that together, that's what was supposed to go there, is a mural of children at play, so children could go and take pictures. Myself and I heard the staff very loud and clear that they too loved the Ice House Storage Area, because it was so visible for cars passing by and from people going to concerts and that kind of stuff, so that, they thought that was the highest visibility of any of these areas. So Todd, I'm with you, it's either that one for me or another place, but yes, I'm all for this.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
You and I have spent a lot of time talking about this, and I have a question related to it. When I was working on a project in the town, I won't say what project, there was a mural on that building, and it was owned by a private individual, and that individual ended up painting over the mural, because they could not come to an agreement with the town on who was supposed to maintain it, and it needed to be basically redone. So that immediately made me think with this, is how would we, who would be responsible for the maintenance, moving forward to ensure that it doesn't fade? And then if it's us, I guess, would we budget each year for that? How would we plan for that? Because I don't want to see the same thing happen, you know, 15 years down the road, where it's just not been upkept, and, you know, who's, who's to pay for it now?
Excellent question. Excellent questions. It would be us, which again, is why the proposal is that we place it on town property. And yeah, we would have to budget for that in the future.
Okay. Great.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I love the idea, and I'm about, I'm an engineer, so this, this side of my brain doesn't work very well.
Work with him on this.
So, but, but just a few, I mean, to Gavin's question, like, I wouldn't want to put something up there for $5,000 that somebody says, "I got to hold there for 30 years." That's, that's not realistic, right? Things are going to change, so we need to, we need to define, I understand, she's coming up to answer the question, but, but we need a defined period of time of like, hey, we'll maintain this for this amount of time, and then if art styles change, or if town tastes change, we can paint it, you know, agreeable gray, again, like we do all our houses.
This is the sign.
Well, I agree with that.
So that, that's the first question. I'll give you the second one, since I see there are kind of elements here. Is this something where the mural is mocked up initially, and we look at it and sign off before it goes on the wall, or do we just have to trust the artist? So help me out with, help me out with, I'm a control freak and a non-art guy, so help me out with both those.
Completely understand. Trouty Sander, I'm the Executive Director of Keep the Midlands Beautiful. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Okay, so a few questions. First of all, Mr. Smith, you asked about the maintenance of it. We are putting a, the highest quality product available, is a graffiti clear coat over the top. That does help maintain it for many, many, many years to come. So if, first of all, it's not going to fade in sunlight for, I don't know how long, but a very long time. You're going to want to cover it up with agreeable gray before you're going to have it fade. So not an issue there. Length of time, we've been writing five-year agreements on it. We ask you to main, to leave it up for five years. After that, you can cover it up. If you take it down within five years, we ask for the money back, so that we could move it or replace it. However, that's negotiable with the town. We're just trying to help beautify and connect the 19 municipalities that we serve. So if you want to negotiate that, that timeframe with us, we're more than happy to do that. Mockup, absolutely. This is your design. We're just trying to do the work for you and bring in the funding, but this is, we get a mockup from the artists, and you control the content 100%. We, when we worked with Swansea on this, the first mockup, we didn't even show them. We went back to the artists and said, "Absolutely not, we're not happy with this, we need to tweak some things." We went back to them with the second design, they made a couple of tweaks, we made some tweaks. We were happy with the third version, and that's what we went with. But, you know, we, we want a product that everyone is happy with. This is your town, I live here, love it, but it's, it's your town, your design, we will do what you want.
Thank you.
I'll stay, just in case there are other questions.
Madam Mayor, is there any insight into how you choose the artist?
We, there are a few artists in town that we know of already, we, we just put it out to bid, and anyone who wants to apply is welcome to apply. We, you know, we have a budget in mind, so we know about what we're willing to pay, but they submit their mockup, and so we'll show that to you, and you choose the style that you're happy with. We, we make it clear, you know, what we're looking for, the block letters with something inside the elements, and so they have something to go off of to show us their first mockup. We'll base the decision on the price and the first mockup and go from there. And you all are involved in choosing the artist.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, to have a motion to put it on the agenda?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith made a motion, Councilman Lyle seconded, and all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Thanks for your interest.
Our next item is Martell and US One Roadway Improvement Project, Rachel Gleaton.
Yes, Mayor and Council Stuart wasn't able to be here, so it's all me tonight. So this is a project that we're excited to discuss with you, because we've got some really good forward movement. The Martell US One Transportation Improvement Project is part of our downtown traffic improvements, was authorized by council years ago. The project is funded through our FY26 budget to begin in FY26 with engineering and design plus right-of-way acquisition. The updated project estimated budget and timeline are attached, as well as a project sketch. What we need from you all is to authorize the updated budget to include revised engineering fee and project contingency. The total authorization for the project is 1.98 million, which matches the project budget in the FY26 five-year enterprise CIP. So what's requested tonight is to place this item on our September 2nd agenda, where you all will authorize the Martell US Number One Project with revised engineering costs and project budget with contingency.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith makes the motion. I'm going to second this motion, because I feel like this traffic project needs to be done, and it's been on the books since, I believe, 2015.
I believe so.
And so I think it's time that it moves forward, especially with the trail there, and all the traffic that's bringing to the trail and everything, so I will second this one. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarity, this revised engineering cost and project budget, what's the source of that? Is that internal cost budget, external engineering firm?
This would be from our external engineering firm. Modern, if I understand correctly, they've just updated and modernized the numbers based on cost of doing business.
And I know Randy's not here, do we know, you don't know which firm is, has this project?
I would have to look in my emails, I, I don't.
Are we, is this a project that we would anticipate a third-party construction management contract on?
We likely would in the future. Right now, we're just design and engineering plus right-of-way acquisition, but yes, that would be a discussion for, once we get under construction. It could be at least a year until that.
Yeah, I just want to note, like, if we're, if we're going to go down that road, I think, I think one of the better things that they can provide for us is a cost estimate that's generally significantly better and more precise than our engineering firms, because they, they have the real numbers from their recent contracts.
Okay.
And so if we are going to enlist them, of which I would certainly be in favor of, I would, I'd want to bring them in early to tighten up that number, because I see a 29% contingency, which is pretty significant, and roadwork is a, it's a difficult one.
It is.
So, I mean, I guess we, we have to discuss that outside of here, but I would just like to get the most accurate numbers possible.
Okay.
Since we're ahead of the game.
Okay. Is that a group that you would want to coordinate with now, prior to going into design and engineering?
I think, I think we need to make a decision if we're going to have a third-party construction management firm, and if we are, part of their, part of their value add is accurate budgeting and estimation a year out, which I, I think, I think they're best positioned for that.
Okay, understood.
Let's just not make 10 more years that, before projects get done.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask, Rachel, so Randy's not here, but it's rare that we have a full chamber at our council meetings, and I just want to ask a couple of questions for the, for those of you that are here, and also for those watching at home. Does the town of Lexington own this road?
No, this is a, a CDOT road.
So the town is making an investment in a road that we don't own?
That is correct.
For the betterment of the community.
Yes.
And this is about a roughly $2 million project?
Yes.
So $2 million that we are investing into the betterment of the community?
Yes.
And over the last couple of years, we've invested how much money in road projects around Lexington?
Oh, my goodness.
Let me put you on the spot, that's Randy's.
No kidding? I was just visiting with someone about this recently, I mean, at least 25 million?
I can answer. I asked Randy, I just wanted to ask you for the record, we've actually set ourselves on a path to invest about 60-plus million dollars. That doesn't mean the dollars have been spent today, but we've spent, or set ourselves on a path to invest 60-plus million. So probably one of the number-one things that we hear as members of council is that traffic is bad in Lexington, and traffic congestion is bad. But I think it's important for citizens to see the actions that we're taking tonight, that we, we hear that, and we are taking steps to address that. It's not going to happen overnight, but this, we care on this council about traffic congestion in Lexington, and we are taking steps to address it. And I'll end by saying, thank you to Randy and his staff for all the work that they do. We may take votes on this, but he, he and his staff is who does the work every single day. So I'll yield back, but I just wanted to make those points.
And hopefully, with this council up here, we can move a little faster on things and not be 10 years on a project like this from now on, when the money's there, so. And Todd's looking at me like, it's time to hush now and move on, so.
It's not just that, if I may, I, I'd like to, to state in opposition of a portion of this project, I think, I think the turn lane is important on Highway 1. I think the realignment is more suited to benefit a, a private development, and would be better suited elsewhere for the time being, so I'm not in favor of this.
Okay. Okay.
But I'm also saying, yes, we've been here for a while.
So with that being said, all those in favor of this project, raise your right hand. And it's six to one opposed. So we'll now move into, let's see, the last item will be from Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton regarding budget adjustments and updates.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Post our July Leadership and Vision Planning Workshop, there were a number of things that were identified, not only by staff, but also by council, of important things that should be included in this new fiscal year's budget. So the first of which is the purchase of Meridian Archer Vehicle Barrier System. This is used for events. You all would have seen them at the Grand Por, the Wine Walk this year, this, we've also shared photos with you. This is designed to keep all of our pedestrians safe, so that vehicles don't access any events that we have on our roadways or in parking lots. It's a significant system that other communities use to include City of Columbia. It's 141,000 for this particular system. I believe it's six of the barricades, the trailer, everything that we would need, it's a turnkey type of investment. We have identified that we have a significant amount of FY25 budget year surplus funds that would be able to fund this particular cost. We've had some personnel changes in our Parks and Community Services Department that were unexpected, and we are proposing to do a reorganization of a few individuals, and we also were unable to locate a CDL driver, and instead have promoted an internal person, and so we need to adjust their pay grade as well, for them taking on a sanitation position that was added to the budget. The Parks Department changes do not require any additional appropriations. We've got authorization for sign ordinance consultant services. This is something that was discussed with council at the workshop as well, although I do believe 7,500 is an error, and that it is 8,500, once we receive confirmation from the consultant. So that would be a number that would need to be updated prior to first reading. We also, that's right, on our enterprise fund, we need to essentially swap one project for another. There is no cost adjustment between the both, so we need to substitute the waterline replacement project that was scheduled for FY27 to do this year in place of the North, North Church Street Waterline Relocation. That was in the budget, so that's a swap out there. And subsequent to budget adoption, was discovered that our enterprise fund capital equipment schedule was incorrect. It did not match the schedule presented at the budget work session. So it's a technical correction of a document that, and the funds are not affected. So those are the proposed changes for the FY26 budget. Our recommendation, or our request, I should say, is a vote to put it on September 2nd agenda. Because it's an ordinance, it will take two readings.
Do I hear a motion to put it on the agenda?
So moved.
Councilman Lyle makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Michael seconded, say, is there any discussion? Okay, never mind, I don't have anything. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Now we're going to move into comments, any comments from the public regarding items listed on the agenda? Please come forward, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes if possible. And if your discussion on the meritage, they'll probably need to direct it more to them, because we're not tired of public hearing part, but we'll listen to you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jeff Icorn, 474 Bar Road, just south of the proposed site of the development. Couple of points on it. It was mentioned earlier about a possible warranty on the ponds. That is our biggest concern, living south of that development. During the 2015 flood, as you know, every dam south of this development burst and had to be rebuilt. So one of my big concerns is, this is all pasture land right now, as you know, it's going to turn into a bunch of concrete and rooftops, and the speed with which water will drain from this site will be dramatically accelerated. It'll head south to our pond, and then south from there to the ponds that blew out, and I just wonder what level of responsibility, liability, or what have you, this developer will have for not only repairing the damage specific to their dams, but also paying for damages potentially to point south. Earlier, the warranty was mentioned, and the budget was mentioned, I'd be curious to know. I'd encourage you guys to ask the developers if that budget is intended to cover specifically just repairs to the roads and dams in the development, or if it will also be budgeted to pay for damages downstream, if they're incurred due to the failure of some of these dams. Also, some questions, when Ben Satcher built some of these ponds, they were not built with the permission of the Army Corps of Engineers. I raised this question in one of the sessions, and someone assured me that there was a letter out there from the Army Corps of Engineers that those ponds are okay. I've never heard of a Army Corps of Engineer retroactively approving something. They typically make you tear it down, and then submit plans if you want to approve it, so I'd be very interested in seeing the contents of that letter, and making sure that those ponds do have the approval of the Army Corps of Engineer. The other point I'd like to make is, there's a fence right now that sits on the property line between ours and this development, and I want to make sure that fence remains intact, because it was a joint investment between our family and the Satcher family when it was built. Quite a sturdy fence, you can see it, it's actually built with SC, or SCE and G utility poles. It's not your average fence, and we'd like that fence to remain intact, because good fences make good neighbors, as everybody knows. And I guess the last point I would make is, these, these retention ponds that are going to be constructed on-site to avoid water flowing into the existing ponds, where does the water flow from those retention ponds? That'd be a question I'd hope the developers could ask. And also, somebody, I'm assuming, site engineer, did the math on the amount of water flow reduced to the ponds that's going to be absorbed by the retention ponds. How much is that water flow being reduced? Because that impacts all the downstream ponds, as you can imagine, and we, with a downstream pond, we'd be curious to know what that is. So ahead. Thank you.
Are y'all okay if we're letting the engineer to address some of his questions? Ma? Go ahead, I'll let you, I'll let you get some of your answers, hopefully.
Thank you. Kayla Joyner, again, and good questions and really good points all around. As mentioned earlier, we are going to defer back to the developer on some of the warranty questions, and questions just around funding for the HOA, and let them come back with some clarity at time of reading. And I'll try and hit these in order. I believe started with asking about the stormwater downstream of these ponds, and how that's going to be addressed. So before any of these ponds can be constructed or approved, we, we have to prove with calculations to the state that there will be no additional water funneled to the existing ponds or off-site. So we will guarantee in our design that there's no water being funneled to any properties south of this development. As far as the new detention ponds, those are designed to have water funneled to them, and then that infiltrates back into the soil. So there will be a master stormwater drainage system designed to make sure we keep it off neighboring properties, and out of those existing ponds, too, is a huge value, just so they remain as-is.
So we can hear you, too? Will you speak into the microphone? Because we can't hear. We were all listening, trying to hear what you were saying to us, so.
Yeah, so regarding the stormwater design, with our calculations to the state that we have to submit before any construction can even begin, those guarantee that no water is funneled to the existing ponds or off-site. We have to prove that. We have to prove that none of the additional runoff calculations shown per the development is going to impact neighboring properties. So, all of that water has to be dealt with on our side of the property line. We cannot impact off. And as mentioned earlier, we do have to actually improve that condition. So, as far as, I think the other question was about the fencing, I know our goal right now is to keep impact as minimal as possible to the neighbors. So, if there's a specific fence we want to preserve, I'm sure we can do, you know, work around that and make sure that that's not touched during part of our construction.
And I think, did that cover it for you, besides your letter?
The high points?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about during construction, all those sediment ponds off?
Yep. There is. So, a big part of our plan set that we'll submit, and these plans will be reviewed by the town staff and the state. As you guys are aware, we have erosion sediment control plans that'll be put in as part of that, and that's to ensure that all the soil is stabilized during construction. So, as that stormwater infrastructure is being put in, we're dealing with it piece by piece to make sure that no runoff is impacting neighboring sites. And then, while I have the floor, if I could offer just one point of clarification, we noticed there was a comment we received at the public meeting that we didn't expound on earlier. Would that be all right regarding density? So, someone had brought up, and this is actually a very good question, just regarding our intent to annex, and if we were to build in the county versus the town, what would those comparative densities look like? So, as we mentioned earlier, we're at about 1.6 units per acre currently. We're allowed up to five within the town. So, the 1.6 is the 308 units we're proposing. That's our absolute max number of lots we would do. If it remained in the county, we can do between two and five units per acre, depending on their final ruling on the zoning type. So, that would put us between 382 and actually 500 units as a max. So, we're still coming in way under what could even be done in the county in regards to density.
Thank you for that. And you are the engineer, and unfortunately, I think you had sick children and were not able to be at the meetings, correct?
I did, unfortunately, yes. But I will be at the next one and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Yes, ma'am. Three minutes.
Just to address what could be built in the county or the town, the county has a quarter-acre minimum lot size right now. That's 10,890 square feet. The town's minimum lot size is 7,260 square feet. If you want to compare apples to apples, you would take the exact 308 homes at an average lot size, according to the developer, of 7,946, and that gives you 2.4 million and some change total square feet being used as developable land for homes. If you divide that by the minimum 10,890 quarter-acre lot size that would be required in the county, you would be able to build 224 homes if this was not annexed into the town and it had to remain in the county, and it used the same, the same square footage that's being plotted right now coming into the town, it'd be 224 homes instead of 308. That's 84 fewer homes if this were to remain in the county, under the county's zoning standards. Thanks.
She brought it up. Go ahead.
Of course, yeah, happy to address that. So, while the county does have different lot sizes, those actually do vary based on the residential zoning designation you would go in under. So, there is the opportunity for smaller lots, actually around 9,000 square feet, which we're proposing over a third of our lots as the 9,000-square-foot size. So, while your PR1 does allow for the 7,200-square-foot lots, there's a lot of developable area we're not taking advantage of. So, that math does work in one regard, but if you actually look at the developable acreage, so the 40 acres of open space that we are keeping and maintaining and adding trails, a lot of that could be utilized to reach that 380-plus lot count if it remain within the county.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I would like, go ahead.
Yeah, may I follow up with that?
Yeah, of course.
I started off my career as a civil engineer as well, and so just to get out of the technical terms, and just to be clear, based on the statement that was just made, the math that was done there was based on the exact road layout that you currently have.
That's correct.
And so, if you were in the county, you would just modify your road layout. You could start with a new site plan, and you could certainly get to the same number or even more with the increased lot size.
That's correct. And we did evaluate this plan under county standards at one point, so the layout we're showing you guys was done, where we started with the open space set aside and then backed into our lots. So, that was already preserved before we even started.
Right. So, we can certainly debate the philosophies here, but let's not debate the facts.
Sure.
And so, the facts are what the facts are, and the densities would be the same in the town or in the county. Thank you very much.
That is correct.
And you left more green space with it coming in the town, and we appreciate that.
Of course.
Green space is important. And you have to do traffic improvements, and we appreciate that, too.
Randy will make sure.
Yes, Randy will make sure, I guarantee you. Anyone else want to speak?
I just have a quick question, really.
Could you give her, she knows who you are, I'm sure, but I'm going to get you to give it to her.
Got it.
In address?
211 Harbor Vista Circle.
My concern is about the third entrance. I do believe that zoning in the town at 150 houses is two entrances, and 300 triggers three entrances, and that would be accessible by the citizens that live in the neighborhood. I also did not hear where that entrance would be triggering traffic impacts. So, I just have some concerns about that. Safety has been a hot topic in the county recently with fire trucks and EMS response times, and I just have a concern about that third entrance. So, I don't know if that can be addressed more specifically.
She said she'd get up and address it.
Yeah, a great question regarding traffic, and with the traffic study still underway, we hope to have clear terms to speak to that in the next month. But I can tell you what we do know from the draft study that's been submitted. So, the third entrance being so close to the second entrance off of Highway 1, those were studied jointly as to what other intersections they would impact. So, when the traffic counts were pulled, you're looking at intersections adjacent to the development that we're going to trigger additional load on. So, for that, it was the Bar Road and Highway 1 intersection, which those two entries together is what triggered the right-hand turn lane needed onto Bar Road. So, those were looked at jointly. We did also take into account that that will not be advertised as a primary entry. So, while it's open, available to citizens, we were looking at the majority of the traffic load on the Bar Road entry and the primary US-1 access point, but it was considered.
But you did say that the third entrance would also be safe for fire trucks to get through and that type of stuff.
It will be, yes. It'll be emergency-rated.
Okay. Emergency-rated, that's what you're saying. Yes.
Can I, just a point of clarification, earlier, I asked a very similar question, that would that third entrance be accessible to residents, and then would it be built to a standard by which the residents could use it?
Right.
I believe the exact term is where we would build it to the extent the fire marshal requires us to.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify that it would actually be built to county road standards, correct? And it would be passable by residents, while it may not be promoted as a third entrance or a third drive, however you want to describe it. Citizens could use it.
Yeah. So, whatever the minimum residential road distinction is within the county, that's what that would be done as. So, again, since it is third, it's required with the development, it is being treated primarily for emergency. So, it won't be done as a standard residential road with the full sidewalks and everything we're doing internal to the development, but it will have to get the full sign-off from the county roads department as well as emergency.
I think that's a DOT road. I think that's a, I think that's a DOT road, not a county road, I think.
It's actually, okay.
It's a DOT road, not a county road.
So, they'll have to, yeah.
Okay.
Point there.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we have a couple announcements. If you have young children, I know a lot of our children are back in school, but if you have young children that are not back in school or in preschool, tomorrow we have Reading in the Park with the mayor at 10:30, and we would love to see you there. We have popsicles, and it's a lot of fun. The children are great. The Ice House Amphitheater Fall Concert, I cannot believe it's already here, but it kicks off this Thursday night at 6:30, and will run through October. For more information, visit the Ice House website or the Town of Lexington websites, and you'll see them, of course, too, on social media. And I forgot to ask the news media if you had any questions, because I do see you sitting out there.
Hannah Wade with the state newspaper. The thing that y'all voted on coming out of executive session, the economic development project, can you tell me a little bit more about that and where it's going to be?
I'm going to let you speak on that.
Excuse me, it's related to the hotel coming to Main Street.
Okay. Can I ask how it's related?
Parking?
Yeah, the town has a parking lease that was signed, I believe, in 2019.
Okay.
Related to it.
Oh, thank you.
That's it.